Can I have a listen?
Yes, sir.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this July 30th, Special District Number Three Meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is 6:33 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Jensen?
Here.
Councilmember Vera?
Excused.
Councilmember Hitchen?
Here.
Councilmember Morell?
Here.
Councilmember Mello?
Here.
You have six members present.
We have six members present and a quorum. Item number three is our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, our Moment of Silence, and our Land Acknowledgement. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, followed by a Moment of Silence dedicated to our men and women serving overseas in the military, and then the Land Acknowledgement. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our land acknowledgement is that we are on the traditional homelands of the Coast Salish tribes. Coast Salish people have lived on and stewarded these lands since time immemorial, and they continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is but one small step toward true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, the experiences, and the histories of the indigenous people of this land. It's really great to be out of the county city building and in community at one of our seven in-district meetings and this evening in beautiful Council District Number Three. And so, as is always customary in our in-district meetings, we pass the gavel to the council member whose district we're in to lead the rest of the meeting. So, Councilmember Cooper, the gavel is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Mrs. Solon? Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. It's especially a great night. We have no rain going on right now, although we need it. And I just welcome the opportunity to be here with you tonight. And I'm going to start with sharing who we are and tell them that they will tell you where they are from and a little bit about their district. I'm going to start here.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Jani Hitchen. I have the honor and pleasure of representing District Six, which includes Lakewood, Dupont, Stilicum, Ketron, Anderson, and McNeil Islands, half of Parkland, and we have a debate about which is the better half of Parkland, and then Joint Base Lewis McCord. Delightful to be here and a little bit of a flashback because I was a teacher in Bethel School District, so I spent like eight hours in trainings in this building and in these buildings. So, it's, but it's okay. We're going to make it through the meeting. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
It's okay.
Hello. My name's Dave Morell. I represent District One. And District One is part of unincorporated South Hill. I have the east side of Meridian all the way out into Graham, 264th. Then I go over the hill down into the Ordin Valley, and I have everything from the city of Sumner to Ordin. Then I go all the small towns. I've got South Prairie. I've got Wilkerson, Carbonado. I've got a few ghost towns in Melmont and Fairfax. And then I go up into Lake Taps, Bonnie Lake. And then I go to Buckley, jump over Enumclaw, and I have Greenwater and the only ski resort in Pierce County. I have Crystal Mountain. I go all the way to Yakima County, up there on the mountains. So, it's a privilege to be here tonight, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're so grateful to be here. We've heard so many great things about the amazing work that happens in this building in particular. I'm Ryan Mello, and in addition to serving as Chair of the Council this year, I represent Council District Number Four, which includes the communities of Furcrest, University Place, and some of the neighborhoods in Tacoma, including downtown Hilltop, central Tacoma, parts of east Tacoma, and south Tacoma. Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Hold that a little bit closer. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here. Thank you for taking time out to be here with us. My name's Marty Campbell. I represent District Five, which begins just on the opposite side of this intersection out here. Canyon and 152nd. So, up Canyon over to Pacific, and then a little bit down to the Puyallup borders, representing communities of Collins, North Clover Creek, Midland, Parkland, the better part of Parkland, Spanaway, or not much Spanaway. The Riverside areas were all the way up to Brownspoint-Point, northeast Tacoma, Furcrest, or not Furcrest, Fife, and Fife Heights, and east Tacoma where I live. And thank you all very much for having me out here.
And I'm Robyn Denson. I represent District Seven, which is north Tacoma, west Tacoma, and everything on the other side of the Narrows Bridge. So, Gig Harbor, Fox Island, Key Peninsula. Thank you for having us.
I am Amy Cooper. I am the representative for this district. And I know a lot of folks don't really know how districts are formed. We're going from Frederickson over to 176th and Meridian, and I'm on the west side, down Meridian to 264th. And then south of 264th, out through Kapousen, out Mount Rainier, Ashford, LB, Eatonville, on over to McKenna, up through Roy, and back over to here. It's one of the best districts, I think, of all. And I have two, one city and one town, Eatonville and Roy. The rest is all unincorporated. And I would like to introduce my assistant, Larry Stickney. He helped get all this together. Thank you, Larry. And then I'll move over here with staff and let them introduce themselves, if you would, please.
Thank you, and good evening. My name's Susan Long, and I serve as the Council's Chief Legal Counsel.
Audrey Persons, Associate Clerk.
Jayer Winesbury, Communications Coordinator.
Brian Dominique, Communications Manager.
Good evening. I'm Julie Moran, the Chief of Staff to the Council.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you to PCTV for putting this all on tonight. And I'll take a point of privilege in recognizing that Senator Jim Acun is here with us tonight. I'm not certain where, but he is here. Behind, over there. Okay. Thank you. Then, we'll get on with our agenda. And we will go to number four, Approval of the Agenda. So, we're, so there's two opportunities for you to comment on the items that are on here tonight. We have the Consent Agenda, which is all of the items that we are considering. And you can, there will be an opportunity to discuss, comment on the grants that are up for approval. And then for items that are not on the agenda, at the end of the meeting, we have the open mic for Community Forum, and you will have up to three minutes to discuss anything that's not on the agenda. So, I am looking to do an approval of the minute. Do I hear? Oh, we do the Consent Agenda first. Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair, move adoption of the Consent Agenda.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. All in favor?
Public hearing on the, on the grants.
Did I just tell you you could discuss the grants? Is there anyone who wishes to give comment on the grant? There are the three. Transportation Improvement Board, for Active Transportation Program, Transportation Improvement Board for Urban Ontario Program, and one for FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency. Seeing none in the room, is there anyone on Zoom? No hands on Zoom. We'll close the public hearing on that. All in favor? We have to do a voice vote. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchen?
Aye.
Councilmember Morell?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays, and we do need to approve the agenda as well.
Motion passes. We'll have a movement, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Do we roll call or comment?
Just a voice vote.
Voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda would be messages from the Executive, and there are none. And for proclamations and recognitions, we have a proclamation for the Pierce County Fair. Clerk, would you please read that into the record?
A proclamation of the Pierce County Council proclaiming August 8th through 11th, 2024, as Pierce County Fair Weekend in Pierce County, Washington.
So, today, the Council is proud to proclaim August 8th through 11th, 2024, as Pierce County Fair Weekend. And I would like to invite our recipients forward as I read the proclamation into the record. Shelley Bennett, Alicia Royal Ambassador, Ellenin Royal Ambassador, Hannah Royal Ambassador. So, I have a proclamation of the Pierce County Council proclaiming August 8th through 11th, 2024, as Pierce County Fair Weekend in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas, since its inception, the Pierce County Fair has become a mainstay of life in Pierce County, providing education, entertainment, and a great opportunity for those working in agriculture to share what they do, bridging our agricultural heritage with modern life. And whereas, the Pierce County Fair provides a space for people to share their gifts and talents in everything from quilting, canning, art, photography, animal husbandry, and more with the community. And whereas, participants in the county's 4H program, the Youth Development Program of Washington State University Extension, managed jointly by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the university, and Pierce County, use the Pierce County Fair to showcase their projects to their community. These projects spark the interest and imagination of our youth and develop lifelong skills while fostering a sense of responsibility, commitment, and resilience. And whereas, the Pierce County Council has consistently supported the county fair for these reasons, recognizing its vital role in promoting agricultural education and supporting youth by teaching essential life skills, building self-confidence, promoting mental resilience, and preventing youth violence. And whereas, this year's theme, Stars, Stripes, and Summer Nights, invites everyone to celebrate our agricultural heritage, life, and culture in Pierce County, and our shared traditions. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 30th day of July, 2024, by the Pierce County Council, that Thursday, August 8th through Sunday, August 11th, 2024, is proclaimed as Pierce County Fair Weekend in Pierce County, Washington. And the fair, held at Frontier Park, is recognized as an invaluable community asset. Thank you. And we have Shelley Bennett, Fair Manager, here. And she, will it tell us about the girls who are here?
Yeah, so I'd like to introduce the girls first, and thank you for the proclamation as well. So, on my right here, I have Pierce County Fair Royal Ambassador Hannah. And then directly behind me is Pierce County Fair Ambassador Aeneen. And then on my left, Pierce County Fair Ambassador Alicia. And they're going to each take a moment to tell you a little bit about why the fair is special to them.
All right. My name is Hannah, and I started 4H three years ago. And with 4H was the first time I actually attended the Pierce County Fair. Back then, since it was 2021, unfortunately, back then labeled the Royal Court, they weren't able to go onstage. I believe, at least. That or my mom didn't let me stay that late. The second year that I was there, though, I had a friend who was also in my club at fair as part of the still labeled then Royal Court, didn't get changed to Ambassador. This year, seeing her up onstage in that gorgeous dress, I knew I had to do it, if not for the title, at least the dress. As you can see, I successfully made it, and I'm standing here in the dress. I'm thankful to the Pierce County Fair and this program for allowing me to reach the place it has now. I've always loved being a part of my community and volunteering. I discovered that with 4H and three years ago, volunteering with the Pierce County Library System in the summers as part of their team volunteer league. Through that, I found my love of volunteering and knew, besides the dress, that this would be the right program for me to interact more with my community. And it has led me to grow in ways I could never believe, encouraged me to apply for a position as a national ambassador with 4H, which I was also extremely lucky and honored to receive. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Aeneen, and I like the Pierce County Fair because it promotes many different clubs and things in the fair. And some things that those clubs have taught me is responsibility and time management, which helps me later, would help me later in life.
The second weekend in August has always been something that I look forward to. I started showing and interacting with the Pierce County Fair long ago, but I started showing about four years ago, and since then, it's become one of my favorite things. The fair has let me be a part of a bigger community and given me a bigger family. I've met some of my now-best friends and people who I'm called family because of the fair and the programs that it promotes. Through 4H and the Royal Court program, I've been able to grow so much, not just through my self-confidence, but I've learned so many life skills, as well as I've had so much fun. Shelley's done a great job promoting the fair, and she's done a really good job keeping going and running. Shelley's done a great job. It's now become the best county fair, and it's become one of the greatest to be a part of.
So, I don't know that there's much to say after that, although I would like to note that we've presented each of you with an invitation to the Pierce County Fair and a copy of the entertainment schedule, which is also available online at piercecountyfair.com. And I would like to just take a moment to ask each one of you if you have been to the Pierce County Fair. I know it seems like a silly question, but glad to see that you all are, have been there at least once. And encourage you, but also challenge you to continue to go as it grows. A lot of changes have happened at the park and in the fair itself. And even with all of the growth in Pierce County, and specifically, south Pierce County, we still run into many, many people at the events that we go to and we promote the fair that say things like, "Oh, you mean the Puyallup Fair?" And we're like, "No." "Oh, the one in Puyallup, right?" "No, no, no." "Oh, in Graham." "Where's Graham?" "Oh, you're talking about the Graham Fair." And we're like, "Yeah, sort of, okay." So, you know, the Pierce County Fair has been in existence since 1947. It's been at Frontier Park since 1968, I believe, '67, '68. And, you know, many people, even though they know about the Pierce County Fair, still that part they find hard to believe. So, we encourage you to help us promote the fair. You know, getting the word out there. It is the Pierce County Fair. It's your county fair. And even though, as the Pierce County Fair Association, you know, we run the fair and manage it for you, it is your fair. And so, you know, come meet your constituents there, you know, greet the youth. We have well over 500 just 4H youths that attend and exhibit at the fair. Everything from archery and crafts to baking and sewing. The animals, you know, are a big part of it, and part of the public really enjoy the animals, but there's so much more to it. The STEM program, for example, photography. So, you know, come and see their work. They have put in long, hard hours, you know, working tirelessly just to showcase what they've done. As well as, you know, for those who have you that haven't been to the Pierce County Fair before, we invite you as well. First timers, we have free entertainment, some great acts on this main stage. But this year and last, we've added a community stage, so a lot of local acts. One that we're proud to say we were one of the first to host is Cage Dallas, who is actually a maintenance worker at Pierce, at Bethel Schools. And yet, he plays guitar, and he sings, and who would have known? So, now he's performed in many, many locations throughout Pierce County. We also have a unique experience for people as they come into the fairgrounds. They're parked by someone on horseback. And they also, that same group, it's called Firestorm Drill Team. They've competed all over Washington State and nationally as well. They also perform drill in the arena on Sunday afternoon. So, stick around and check that out. It's amazing to watch them interweave at high speeds. You want to close your eyes, but you don't dare, so you don't want to miss any of it. Of course, the fair food. You can't miss the fair food. Don't forget the scones. I know the price has gone up, but it's still hard to resist that fresh scone. And we have some fun new stuff this year. We have, we've always had a stamp scavenger hunt for the young kids. This year, we've added an Ag Adventurer scavenger hunt, where youth a little bit older will be looking for fun ag facts throughout the grounds and get some prizes, as well as entered into some drawings for other prizes. And we've also added an adult scavenger hunt. And you can obtain a passport, which you will go to different vendors and get stamps. And then you can be entered into daily prizes, as well as a four-day prize if you participate. Those different days, you get an entry for every, every day you participate. And we have amazing gifts for that. Gift cards. I heard one is a $100 Amazon gift card. So, daily prizes, as well as a four-day grand prize. So, come on out, have some fun, you know, see what the youth have been doing. Like I mentioned, the over 500 4H youth, but we also have another 200 to 300 adults and youth that exhibit their handiwork. So, if y'all have some handiwork, some crafting, some sewing, baking, go ahead and enter it in the fair and win a prize, win some ribbons. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Wait, we're going to do the photo? Photo op? I don't know. Thank you, ladies, and thank you, Shelley. Usually, we have to speak after the fair, so it's a great opportunity to be able to inform you of what goes on before the fair happens, so you get a little more excited about that. So, on to the next part of the agenda. For the, the next presentation will be the Scott Martin, Director of the Pierce County Skill Center. He's going to share us a little bit about what this place does and how it educates, and how much it has been. I do want to say, I did have a parent tell me that it saved their child because he just wasn't fitting in the public school and came here and thrived. He was in the aeronautical division of it. I don't know if it was aircraft pilot or mechanic or something to that nature, but he found his, his, his meaning.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. We're, we're very lucky to be able to be in that position. So, members of the Council, thank you so much for the opportunity this evening to not only come and let us host here at the Pierce County Skill Center, but also the opportunity to share a little bit about who we are and what we do. Hopefully, the slide, hopefully you can keep up with me. So, here we go. So, Pierce County Skill Center. What we do here is we are high-level career and tech ed for all students in Pierce County, any school district that's interested in partnering with us. And it's our mission to prepare all of our students for success in high-demand, high-wage jobs and/or post-secondary education. So, there's always a conversation about the pendulum between college and trades. And we're kind of a yes-and institution that has opportunities for all of those things. So, one thing that, as I said, go ahead and hit that slide. We're the regional career-specific programs that are not typically available in local high schools. So, what happens is students from their high school come here for half of their day, and they go to their regular high school for half of their day. And what people may not be aware of is that we actually serve school, 10 school districts from all over Pierce County. So, we're not just one district. Although Bethel is our host district, we serve 10 different school districts, as you can see on the slide, all across Pierce County. What makes this place amazing in terms of that is that this structure allows us to save all kinds of money. First, there's taxpayer savings. We have programs here that you couldn't afford to put on in every single school. We also save student savings because there's no cost to attend here. And any fees that are associated, if a student in the medical program needs to buy scrubs, we actually have funds that will help support those if that's something they can't pay. So, no student, there's no barrier for any student financially to attend here. And then the other piece is it allows for this idea of purpose, where in career and tech ed, we have exploratory, where you're, you're trying new things and experimenting, and then preparatory, where we're getting, getting you ready for a job or a career or further post-secondary education. So, what that allows is this, this nice flow of, of programs. Go ahead and, go ahead and hit it three more times for me. So, in middle and, middle and high school, you get a chance to try out things, like a CAD program. What does it look like to, to design something? Or maybe a medical, what, what might it be like to be in a medical career? Then from there, you can come to the Skill Center and be in a preparatory program where you're digging in deeply and spending a lot of time to decide, is this something I want to do and gain those skills? And then here at the Skill Center, we connect students with post-secondary opportunities, apprenticeships, direct employment. Just a year ago, we had over 53 students hired directly into Boeing at career jobs in wages of $27 to $30 an hour, straight out the gates. The next thing that, that we also are able to accomplish for our students, and you can go three here again. Students here earn equivalency credit. So, for example, in our criminal justice class, while they're here, they would also get their civics credit back at their home high school because they're learning that work here. Or in our fire science class, they would get PE credit because they're doing physical training. In our culinary program, they would get an art credit and a marketing credit because that's the work they're doing to run a business here on site. So, they not only get that, they also complete their grad pathway. As you may know, in education in Washington State nowadays, there are multiple things you can accomplish to be able to graduate, one being passing the state exam. One other way is to complete a CTE graduation pathway. And what happens is every student that attends the Skill Center, based on the way we're structured, automatically completes that. They're all ready to graduate, even if they don't pass the state exam, which most of them do. Also, while they're here, they're earning college credit. So, we articulate all of our programs with local institutions so that our classes count as credit for their institutions when they get there. If you go to Bates or Clover Park or some of the local colleges, you'll jump ahead in their curriculum based on the fact that you were here. And for other programs, we have college and the high school where we actually vet our instructors as professors for their university. So, they are actually dual-enrolled as professors for their university, so they are actually dual-enrolled while they're here, both high school and college at the same time. On top of that, every one of our program gets what are called IRCs, so Industry Recognized Credentials or Certificates. So our automotive students get student ASE exams. We have, we graduate 38 to 40 students a year out of our medical program, who leave with their Certified Nursing Assistant credentials and are able to go straight to work in the medical industry. The next amazing thing while they're here, and you can go three again, they get industry-level facilities. And for those of you, I know many of you have been here and have spent time and been able to visit. If you haven't, I highly recommend it. The facilities are next level. The stuff they're able to do here would blow your mind. While they're here, they get work-based learning. So for example, we run a public-facing restaurant onsite. We cater events onsite through our culinary program. Our physical therapy program runs community clinics that are free to community members to come, and we have clinicians from local PT clinics come down, they'll assess local community members, and then our students will work with them on a series of care and exercises that they can then take home. So they're getting live, work-based experiences. We have students in our machining program that are actually completing a full apprenticeship, 2,000 hours in local machine shops around town, and doing their related supplemental instruction here on certain days. On top of that, we have career and tech organizations. Many of you, you know, FBLA, FFA, those types of organizations are career and tech organizations, so every student that's here gets to participate in those. In fact, we just sent 13 students to Skills USA National Competition in Atlanta. So that's another piece of the puzzle. The other piece, let's go to the next slide. So let me share with you the programs, and you can just rattle through these. There's going to be 14, so you can count how many slides you're going to go. But just so you can see what we do, aerospace machining and fabrication, composites, those are our aerospace, where students build airplanes and those types of things. Construction trades, so they're building houses, doing plumbing, doing electrical things. Automotive, we have technology, video game development, IT and cybersecurity. As I said, we run a culinary arts and an onsite restaurant. We have off-site program cosmetology that's held at Clover Park. When students leave there, they leave with their full Cosmo license. They're able to start their own business the very next day. We have pre-veterinary programs. We've got medical careers, as I mentioned, with Certified Nursing Assistance, pre-pharmacy, so our students can leave and test for the farm tech. Those students work in our local Walgreens and do externships for three weeks at a time. We've got pre-PT and sports medicine. And then in terms of public safety, criminal justice, you can hit one more time on the slide, and fire science. So we have, we have police cruisers onsite. We have a fire engine onsite. Our students train with those professionals in those industries live. Couple of the updates for us, next one, and you can hit four total, you'll see it. So go back one. There you go. So facilities, this is the newest thing in our world. In 2021, the state funded $9.8 million to modernize and convert a building that's behind you there in front of me. They did, we worked 21 and 22 to do some design work, and then currently, we just completed construction of this new building, and it says fall of 2024. We're a little early. We jumped in for summer school in the last weeks, and we are live in that building. If you look at the map, that opens up three small circles on the side, and if you go to the next slide, and you can hit three of them. We're adding, this fall, we're growing the Skill Center by approximately 30%. We're adding an electrical trades program. We have over 50 students scrambling to be in that program. We're opening a medical assistant program. Those students will leave with their MA license, be able to go straight to work in a doctor's office when they graduate as seniors. And we're adding mechatronics, which everyone will say, what's mechatronics? And we say, think of an Amazon warehouse, right? The box gets picked up by a robot and put on a conveyor belt, and it needs to go to Cleveland, so a piston comes out and laser scans it, and it puts it, all of that automation in industry is mechatronics. So we'll be teaching the next generation of students to do that. So that is some of the main stuff, and I wouldn't be able to leave without taking one more small opportunity. Next slide. I want to share with you, and many of you, of course, know this story, but I don't know that everyone out there does. Our Partner of the Year, Good Roots Northwest, go ahead and hit the next slide. So Good Roots Northwest, for those of you who don't know, are a local food bank organization in the Bonny Lake area, and they are really working on changing the way that food banks work, and the dignity focus, and the people focus, kind of reimagining that narrative. Next slide. Really trying to make it a place that any one of us would be excited to take our families. I walked in and said, this looks like a Trader Joe's. It's kind of mind-boggling. They also are doing some really innovative things with food lockers, so that folks who need those services are able to access them 24 hours a day and not leave a job to go figure out getting food for their family. So some amazing things they're doing. Another major focus, and this is where the council comes in, is food waste reduction. So this is, if you look at the stats there on the slide, there's a lot of wasted food in our communities, and so Good Roots Northwest is working hard to do something about that. One thing you may not know about food banks is, oftentimes, they get all kinds of weird donations, right? Pallets of this and boxes of that. Next slide. If you think of it, you get a 40-pound box of frozen chicken, well, you can't hand that to a family. That's no good to a family. Or a 50-gallon drum of oats. So they have this 50-gallon drum of oats and a 40-pound box of frozen chicken. Well, what do we have? Next slide. We have got classrooms full of students that are super excited to learn culinary and figure out what to do. What else do we have? We have a professional kitchen, and we're ready to figure out all kinds of neat things. So we started partnering, and what did we do? We took the chicken, and we said, let's figure out what we can do with it. Next slide. And we kept figuring out what we could do with it. Next slide. And we kept figuring out what we could do with it. Next slide. And we kept figuring it out. And we kept, what are we going to give me this? We'll make this. You make, you give us noodles, we'll make mac and cheese. You give us oats, we'll make granola. You give us oats, we'll make cookies. Our students are figuring out the recipes. Our students are pulling it together. They're learning how to butcher. They're learning how to do things. This picture's one of my favorites, because in the top corner, you see that we actually had a game warden that caught someone poaching salmon and brought it to the food bank, and they said, hold on, and they brought it to us, and our students went, okay. And they went crazy with it and ended up sending back Northwest smoked salmon chowder back to the food bank for families to take. So it's just a win-win-win-win-win. So the CEO, who happens to be with us wonderfully in the corner, hi, I'll wave at you. She, I believe, brought this very much to your attention, and next slide. So real quick, I forgot this one was coming, but at the end of the school year, and we started mid-year somewhere, we had saved over 1,800 pounds of chicken, and that's actually an old piece of data. We ended up with over 1,500 meals that we provided for Good Roots. So it came to your attention, this is where I was going. You might wonder, you might notice these wonderful people up on this slide here. And in fact, Councilmember Morell came out and visited. We walked around, had some conversations about what, the work that we're able to do. And so, as you well know, since you did it, next slide, but maybe not everyone knows, you approved as part of the budget for $24,000, $25,000, $125,000 appropriated to the Skill Center as part of food waste reduction program. So just an update, we're using that money to buy supplies and equipment. We have actually, at our cost, hired a third instructor for that program and increased our enrollment by another 12 students per session, so that's about 33%. And we are upping our ante with the amount of work and the equipment that Pierce County has provided for us to be able to do much more work. So we're going to continue with that. Sorry for taking so much time, but we just wanted to share the amazing things, and thank you for being here, so.
Thank you. That was amazing what you can do. And I would like to announce Stacy Sonich is here, who's the CEO of Good Roots. If you want to stand, please, so that folks say, I'm going to put y'all on the spot. Brilliant. Great marketer. Thank you so much. So we're going to segue into the next presentation, is the Community Forest Update, and we have the Joe and Justin show. For those of you who came last year, they did a great presentation, and we had, I think it was some interesting things with the PowerPoint at that time, but you guys did a great job in sharing what was.
Who really needs PowerPoint anyway, right? I think we have one, though.
Yeah.
Because people don't really want to watch me talk. Thank you so much.
Hey, where's Joe?
Joe's here. He'll come up in a second.
Okay.
We didn't want it like.
Okay.
Two at the.
Great team.
Yeah. So my name is Justin Hall. I wear many hats in the Nisqually watershed, but I'm actually here today as the President of the Board of Directors of the Nisqually Community Forest, to give you an update, and thank you so much to the council for inviting us here, and to Councilmember Kruber for inviting us back. She liked us so much, she wanted to have us back. So I want to talk a little bit about the Nisqually Community Forest. Next slide. So just before I talk about what it is, talk about where it is. So the Nisqually watershed buttresses the southern part of Pierce County. About 2/3 of the watershed is within Pierce County. When you're the benevolent dictator, do not use rivers as boundaries between counties, but use ridge tops, but we're happy to have Pierce County be a part of it. Next slide. So the Michelle River sub-basin is the main tributary of the Nisqually. It's critically important for threatened Chinook and Steelhead, runs through the town of Eatonville and through Councilmember Kruber's district. Next slide. And then Nisqually Community Forest is located in kind of the upper headwaters of parts of the Michelle. We're mostly in the Busy Wild Creek sub-basin. Between us and the Nisqually Indian Tribe, the entire Nisqually Community Forest is a little over 5,500 acres of actively managed working forest lands. And to our south, in the main stem Nisqually watershed, we have another 2,500 acres from our partner at the Nisqually Land Trust, that manages conservation lands for Spotted Owl and Marled Murelet. Next slide. So it's a beautiful location. We'd love to get you guys all up there at some point, maybe not in an election year, when you're all busy doing other things, but next year, we'd love to have you up to come see it. It's mainly a high-elevation forest. We have a lot of silver fir and noble fir, which will come back around a little bit later in the presentation, some dug fir. It's all former industrial forest land. It's, most of the upper watershed is reaching kind of its time of maturity and industrial age, so it's 50, 60, 70 years old. Next slide. And so, getting back to that original thing, what is a community forest? For us, a community forest is, it's a forest that's owned and managed by the local community for the local community. We have many timber companies. They have, you know, reasons that they own their lands. They have investors that they need to provide profits to. You know, they have mills that they're feeding. Hampton's one of our neighbors, Manulife. For us, we really wanted, you know, they're beholden to other interests. We wanted to be beholden to the local interest, to the residents of Pierce County, to the residents of the Nisqually watershed, the folks that, you know, maybe when they were younger, their parents hunted and fished and walked in up in these lands. We want to make that possible again. We want it to be a forest for the whole community. Our one struggle is, we are four miles uphill and about 2,000 feet, so we're figuring out how to get the community up there, but we want to get folks up there for recreation, up there for tours, reopen the land for hunting, which we're planning to do this fall. Not that it was closed for hunting before, but have it open for hunting without a charge. Next slide. So we started this effort back in 2014, when we incorporated it to the Nisqually Community Forest, and in 2021, we received our first acres with grants from the state. And so in, since 2021 to 2024, we're up to 5,500 acres. Had a large group of people that were interested at the time, advisors to us as a board, helped us form the Nisqually Community Forest and what we're trying to do. Next slide. So the vision of what we want this Nisqually Community Forest to be, as I said, is locally-owned, and we want it to be economically self-sustaining. We've been fortunate enough to have help from Pierce County, from the state of Washington, and other grant programs to purchase the lands, but we're not ever coming back to necessarily ask for money to operate those lands. We want to be these be working forests that will harvest timber and use that, those proceeds to do the management of those lands. We want to be at scale. You know, our goal is to be 10,000 to 20,000 acres. That's most of that Michelle sub-basin. We're at 5,500 after three and a half years, so we think that that's possible. Takes a lot of money to get from here to there, though. And we really want to manage that for that suite of local public benefits, and we talk about sustainable forestry jobs and products. We currently provide probably a little over 20 jobs to Pierce County residents, from our loggers, our truckers, our pre-commercial thinning crew, based out of Tacoma, our bough harvest. So we actually, the trees that we cut down that are too dense and young, the pre-commercial thinning, we actually have a crew that follows those, that crew, and takes the boughs off, and those used for floral greens, sold throughout the nation and internationally. So we're trying to find all those different ways that we can make all the different forest products work. We want recreation up there, as we said. Education, we're doing tours, talking about ecological forestry, what are the different things that we're doing. We're protecting wildlife habitat, clean air and water, providing scenic vistas, especially the land trust's land right above Ashford, really protecting that vista for the tourism-based community that Ashford is, and support for, again, that local tourism industry. Next slide, please. We came up with a forest management plan, which instead of kind of large clear cuts, we are going in every 15, 20, 25 years to each stand, and taking out a percentage of those trees, doing thinning. So if you go to the next slide, in the lower left, you can see what that stand looked like when we first came to it. It was very, very dense. There was no light reaching the forest floor, there's no forest floor growth, and then by going in and thinning it, you can see that we now have ferns coming up in there. What we'll do is, as we keep going through, we'll get a really heterogeneous forest with young trees and old trees in different sizes, and that provides the most habitat for different wildlife and bird species. And it also, we've shown through modeling with the EPA, provides the most water into the system, which is critically important for salmon. The Michelle, in late August, gets down to 2, 3 cubic feet per second. Really, it's a trickle. You can't see it moving. If we can change the average age of this forest to 80 to 100 years, we can get it up to 9 to 11 CFS, and it seems like, yeah, 8 cubic feet per second, that's nothing, but it's not. It's huge. It makes those deep pools for salmon that over summer, deeper and keeps them colder, and it's just critical. So that's a lot of the goals, you know, along with the community, is helping improve the habitat for salmon. Next slide. So as I said, we are actively managing the forest. We treat 150 to 200 acres a year. We had two logging crews last year. We're hoping to add a third for some of our steeper slopes, but we are actively managing this land. It's different from land trust and conservation land. We are working hard to make sure that it provides those jobs along with the conservation values. And we've, with those 20-plus jobs, we look at what our timber receipts are. We're putting over $1 million each year into the Pierce County economy, and it always comes up with nonprofits, whatnot. We are paying full property taxes, the equivalent of what any other timber company would be paying, so we do pay back into the community, and that's really important to us. Next slide. One of the other things that we've done, so as I said, we were planning to do these multiple-entry thinnings. We go in every 15, 20 years, but working with our forester, Northwest Natural Resource Group, we cut in some openings, half-acre, quarter-acre, one-acre openings, to look at snowmelt. So can we keep snow up in the forest longer, because that will help provide water later into the summer? And we've actually shown that half-acre to quarter-acre openings do a better job of keeping snow than a thinned area would do, because when it's thinned and there's trees all around, the snow melts off, the trees melts into the snow, that water quickly melts the snow that's on the ground. But if we have these openings, and the sun is protected by the trees that are along the edge of the opening, the snow actually sticks around for two or three weeks longer. And so we're adjusting on the fly how we're going to continue managing our forest to create more small openings throughout, to, again, try and increase water for salmon. Next slide. And, you know, talk about recreation. We've long housed the Mount Tohoma Trails Association, the largest free hut-to-hut ski area in the United States. They, the land trust and Jeanette Dorner is here, the executive director of the land trust, holds the title to the land underneath their hut, and then most of their ski trails are on the community forest, and they're great partners. And I know they're hoping to build another hut, a little higher elevation, as snow level keeps creeping up, and so we're looking forward to working with them that in the future. And I think with that, I'm going to introduce Joe Kane, who's a former board member and now our general manager, to talk about a little bit more.
Thanks, Justin.
Thanks, councilmembers. I'd like to bring up Jeanette Dorner as well, Executive Director of the Nisqually Land Trust.
I'm just here to say hi. Joe and Justin are doing most of the talking tonight. It's a great partnership with the land trust and the community forest. They are a subsidiary of the land trust, so they operate under our umbrella, but they also operate as an independent organization. So the only control that the land trust has over the community forest is our subsidiary, is our board members appoint the board members for the community forest. So that's, it gets a little complicated, but that's the relationship, but really proud of what the community forest does.
And to explain that a little bit further, we chose the corporate arrangement that we did as a type-one supporting organization of the Nisqually Land Trust. We're a 501(c)(3), but we can engage, we can produce our own revenue. We are not required to go out to the public and ask for donations. When we set up the community forest, we didn't want to crowd the field in the Nisqually. We've got a lot of worthy 501(c)(3)'s in the community, in the Nisqually watershed, and we didn't want another one sending envelopes to you, asking you to send them back with money in them. So we support ourselves entirely from the revenues we produce from the forest. In fact, next slide. We got to do in the slides. One of our sources of revenue production, which aligns very closely with county values, is carbon credits. Because we don't harvest as intensively as we could under forest practice rules, we're eligible on the international voluntary carbon credit market to sell carbon credits from our property, and they have proved enormously popular. Carbon credits from the Pacific Northwest are some of the most valuable carbon credits in the world right now. People want them. And we've just received our first check. right now. People want them. And we've just received our first check. We sold the first seven years of our credits in advance. So we know, we've got a seven-year income stream just from carbon credits. That's not timber, that's not bow harvest or anything else. Really helps a group like ours steady out. And it knows, we know we can support all our stewardship costs just from our carbon credits if we have to. The other great support that that revenue provides, and here we want to thank Pierce County, will be for our first full-time paid staff member. In fact, our first staff member, I'm technically a consultant, and I work one day a week. And we call me general manager just because we made up a title. It means I can buy and trade directors, basically like a, like a baseball manager. But we'll, thanks to the grant from Pierce County, we will hire our first full-time staffer probably at the beginning of next year, probably be an executive director. And anybody, if you know about nonprofits, or we should take off. We're already doing well, but as soon as you professionalize staff, you take off. That's what we're counting on. We want to thank Pierce County too, and the council for the letter of support for the Nisqually Indian Tribe for their application to the Recreation and Conservation Office's Community Forest program for $3 million. Thank you very much. We don't know where we'll rank out yet. They're our major partner in the community forest. We've ranked in the two previous rounds, we've ranked second and third each time. The tribe has received $6 million toward paying back their $12 million investment in the community forest so far. So we're hoping for another $3 million. And thank you for your support on it. We also want to thank the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, which provided a grant to the Mountaineer Business Alliance this past year, a substantial grant to fund a feasibility study for the upper Nisqually watershed to create a mountain biking network throughout the upper Nisqually watershed. When we were creating the community forest way back 2013, we were having community meetings, what we kept hearing was, we need a mountain biking network up here. A great economic driver, wonderful source of recreation, of course. So the feasibility study will start, I believe, right now. And we're participating, Elbe Hills State Forest will participate, the Business Alliance, which is led by Whittaker Mountaineering in particular, will be the, receive the funds and will conduct the feasibility study. Has contracted out to consultants. And we'll see. But we think we've got a lot of potential up there, and it could be not only a lot of fun, but again, a real economic driver. The, Justin mentioned about a hunting program, and we're working with the Department of Fish and Wildlife to open a public, open up all 5,500 acres to public hunting. The tribe's land as well as ours, and the tribe is really committed to the idea of sharing their land with the public. They'll have, we'll have tribal hunting season, we'll have public hunting season. So we're hoping to get that launched when, by next year? Hopefully this fall. So, and we're hoping to have, among other things, an elk auction, which we would do in Eatonville. If we do it, maybe at the cider house, might be fun. And I'll leave it there for programs we're doing. The other, with one other that we have high hopes for, we were invited in a very heavy competition based on letters of interest to invite, to submit a full proposal to the Charles Allen Foundation. We don't know how we rank yet. We know a lot of folks who submitted letters of interest. We know of only one other organization that was actually invited to apply. So $1 million proposal to make Nisqually Community Forest a Pacific Northwest demonstration forest, to be the community forest that people come to to study and learn how to be a community forest. And that has a lot of components, including training for forestry for young folks and for tribal folks, and a feasibility study to see about creating, building a mill in the Nisqually watershed. We used to have the biggest timber mill, what, west of the Mississippi?
Yep.
In the mid-20th century, we don't have a single mill left in the Nisqually watershed. So maybe we'll bring one back and create more jobs. And so we'll leave it there. Thanks.
Great information. I always learn something new on that. And that's a great segue, because to get out to the mountain from, from this area, a lot of us take Mountain Highway, Highway 7. And we have Steve Rourke from the Washington DOT here to tell us about the state Route 7 pre-design.
Yeah, good evening, council members. A pleasure to be here to share some of the important work we're doing on the pre-design efforts on the SR 7 corridor. And if you could just go to the next slide, Complete Streets is now part of everything WashDOT does. If it meets the criteria, you see there on that slide. So it's essentially every project that we do. So I like to lead off with this slide. Complete Streets is about improving accessibility and comfort for all users of the transportation system, people that walk, bike, take transit. But it's also about making sure that the traffic flows. We're looking at crash reduction and speeding in our corridors, and also access for multimodal users and maintaining access to local roads for businesses, transit, and freight. So if you go to the next slide, I want to dive into the project itself. You may recall, some of you may recall that the SR 7 pre-designed study was intended to be about a 15-mile effort, all the way from 38th Street South to about 260th, which is shown on this slide. Last budget cycle here at DOT, we have a shortfall in our preservation program. So we are deferring the portion of the project that's funded by preservation funding. So from 38th Street South to the Roy Y, we are not able to move forward with that portion of the pre-design effort. However, the good news is, from the Roy Y South to 260th, we do have a source of funding through our safety program to move forward with those pre-design efforts. And that is what we are doing right now. We've already stood up the team. We've had some advisory meetings that I'll touch on in a minute. Because it's funded through our safety program, the pre-design is going to be focused on a lot of the enhancements in the corridor. From a strictly safety standpoint, we are proposing what's shown there on that slide, roundabouts at four locations. At the Roy Y, and then at 22nd and 24th, which are the intersections on each side of Fred Meyer, and down at 260th. And the pre-design effort, if you go to the next slide, is really going to start diving into all of the key elements that we look at in pre-design. I'm not going to read those off, but those are all the things we'll be working with the community on to determine what other elements we'll be designing into the project, things like signage and striping changes, crosswalks, helping folks who are not in vehicles get around the corridor better, accommodating some of the transit needs. We could be looking at speed reductions throughout the corridor. So lots of things to talk about. None of those decisions have been made yet, but we're certainly interested in engaging with the community to figure out what this looks like. And if we go to the next slide, this is our schedule. As I mentioned, we're already, we're already underway with the project. We have an advisory group stood up. And we expect to be done, we have an online open house in September. We've got some pre-designed shretts coming up, I think, next month. We want to, in quarter four, so by the end of the year, have a settled-on concept that would move into the design process in the first quarter of '25. And as that slide shows, hopefully get to construction done by 2027. And if we'll go to the next slide, I'm going to change subjects just a little. Oh, no, this is the, our community engagement schedule here. So some of these things we've already initiated, and that lists some of the things I just spoke about. We've got a design shred and an online open house coming up. And if you go to the next slide, I do want to pivot a little bit to, I think you're all familiar with, we received funding through the transportation budget to make pretty important improvements to a lot of the pedestrian crossings in the Spanaway Parkland area. We have 11 locations where we will, we will be replacing rapid flashing beacons that you see out there today, that some are working sometimes, sometimes they're not. We have a lot of wire theft on the corridor. All those are going to be replaced with traffic signals. That work, we're ordering the materials, there is a backlog, so we're not, we're getting a bit of a late start, but we expect to start this winter and have the project completed in the summer of 2025. So it's a much-needed safety improvement for the corridor. And if you go to the next slide, I wanted to just wrap up by saying we do have a webpage for the pre-design efforts underway. It's listed there. And we are certainly available at any time to have dialogue about the project. And that's what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I mean, I haven't had questions yet, but I, but because of it being the road, I wondered if any of the members had a question for you. I guess not. You got, got off on that. And before we do the last presentation, it's on the comp plan update. And we have Lauren Flemester from Public Works, but I do want to announce Denise Johnson has shown up. And, yeah, I, please come make an appearance just for a moment. Denise has been with us for, was it 35 years?
36.
36 years, 36.5 years. And otherwise, she would have been clerking tonight, but today was the last day. And I just want to publicly thank you again for your long years, your hard work, your commitment, perseverance, and taking care of us. Thank you, Denise. Yeah, just, you don't think you get to this day so fast. Okay, back to business. Lauren, thank you so much for taking the time tonight to present. This is the critical area, the information, and it involves everybody. And I thought it's something good tonight for folks to learn about.
Great. Thank you for having me. So I'm going to start briefly with just a quick overview on the comprehensive plan, critical areas nestled within that. Next slide, please. And you can just go right on. So essentially, I think something that's really important to understand is the comprehensive plan is backed up by multiple layers of government from the state on down to our community areas. So it really, like you said, Councilmember Krueger, impacts us all from the state level on down to our neighborhoods. Next, please. So the comprehensive plan itself is really about the community's vision, and it's really framed around how we use and develop our lands. Everything from thinking about environment and climate to how we house ourselves, how we use our land, whether it's for business purposes or for enjoyment. And then capital facilities and transportation, which is near and dear to our hearts here in Planning and Public Works. So our roads and all of our facilities, our utilities that help us be able to function. Next slide, please. So the comprehensive plan is something that we do now every 10 years. And it's a 20-year vision for how we grow and change in our communities. And there are many pieces that all fit together, and I won't bore you with the details, because some of it's rather technical, but everything from how much land capacity we have to managing our shorelines, doing things like reporting on our progress, around things like affordable housing. And then something else that we do that's very important, I think, at the individual level is every couple of years, folks can bring desires about how they want to do something different on their land than how it's basically been zoned. So that's something that we're constantly doing. So the comprehensive plan is a living, breathing document that's constantly changing. Next, please. So our project timeline, this makes it look like we're almost done, but the funny thing is about when you get to the, close to the finish line is kind of the toughest part. We've been going since 2022, and you can see some of the steps we've taken. Right now, we're finalizing our documents, and we're going to be working really closely with the council to finalize and hopefully adopt at the end of this year. And that means essentially that all the work will be done, and that certain pieces will go from becoming bills to laws, and the policies will be signed off by council and the executive. Next, please. Okay, so a little bit more about the process. We'll be out in community at our land use advisory commissions, talking about how these changes specifically impact our community plan areas. We've been going to planning commission, and also honestly, we've been going to council. But as we move closer to completing this process, you'll be seeing more documents, more comprehensive pieces moving through. I believe our last planning commission date is in October. We'll be working with council through the end of the year at the committee and full council level. And then we'll be finalizing, hopefully with the county executive before he leaves office. Next, please. Okay, so now we're getting to the fun part, which is the critical areas ordinance. And I'll provide a more comprehensive update there. Next, please. So what are critical areas regulations? They essentially look at how do we conserve the functions of different sort of ecological types that we have out and throughout Pierce County, which is a very diverse county. We have many things here that we all, I think, enjoy, but we also count on to function in certain ways. So everything from wetlands to fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, critical aquifer recharge areas, geologically hazardous areas, and flood hazard areas. And I'll explain those all in a little bit more detail later. Next, please. So I mentioned before that these things are cyclical. We're constantly updating and changing them. We typically do a very significant update as we do our comprehensive plan to the critical areas. So essentially, you know, things are constantly changing in terms of what we understand about how our environment is functioning. We get new science that changes how we respond and regulate. So, you know, we hear from the state and at the regional level, different policy changes we need to make. We have new science that we learn from, so we adapt and change our regulations. We understand in our current regulations where things might be missing. So that's that gap analysis. And then we work with council, the county executive, scientists, our staff, to pull together amendments that'll change the Pierce County code. And then we go through the legislative process that involves many things, but one of the most important things is input from the public. Next, please. So I'll move quickly through this, just talking about what that process entails in terms of how we're learning and processing information about the changes we make. I mentioned the science changes over time, so we look at that scientific research. We look at state and regional policies or mandates that come down that we have to follow. And then again, we listen to folks from, everyone from, you know, folks in the farming community to developers, to regular residents who want to enjoy our different lands that do different things, right? We're getting all this input as we move through this process. Next, please. Okay, so another timeline specifically to our critical areas process. We've been working on this again for quite some time. Right now, we recently went to planning commission, and we got recommendations. We will be coming to council committee in August, in a couple days, so it'll be in the next few weeks. And then again, that package will be coming to full council, looking for adoption alongside the comprehensive plan. Next, please. Okay, so I'm going to get into a little bit of the specifics around what's entailed in the regulations, but I don't want to bog down or take too long, so I'll try to keep it very high level. So I think the tile here that's the most important is the second one, that's talking about no net loss of ecosystem functions. So essentially, what these regulations are trying to do is sort of press pause on sort of degradation or sort of loss of the ecosystem doing what it does in order to keep the environment functioning in a good way. So it's essentially saying that development should not take away from, you know, how things like our streams and our wetlands and all those things are functioning to keep us healthy and safe. But I think something that is really important as we think about the economy is making sure that as we're regulating, that people know to expect there's consistency in the regulations, that there's clarity around when exemptions and waivers are there as we change the regulations. So that's always really important when you're developing code, is that it's clear and reliable and dependable. Next, please. So I'm not going to get too deep into this one, but it's really important. It's something that is new to the critical areas regulations. It basically talks about mitigation basically is how do you make up for causing damage to a thing, right? So this is basically saying, we want you to avoid causing damage, but if you can't, here are the steps you take. And it steps you through as different impacts are happening, what you need to do to rectify the situation. So that's going to be put into code, which I think is a really good step on our implementation and regulation side. So it means our folks who look at our permits and are doing the work actually have a guide for how to handle this that's more clear. Next, please. Okay, so a little bit more about some of the changes to the critical areas. It's a pretty robust code package, so it's a lot of changes. Of course, folks need to be able to visualize and see this, so we need to make map changes and update our maps. I mentioned already about clarifying regulations, but this is particularly with respect to agriculture, which is extremely important here in our county. And then applicants, again, being able to have clear understanding about determining the types and boundaries of critical areas as they're moving through, asking for a permit. Next, please. Okay, so I promised I would talk a little bit more about the kinds of critical areas and what they do and where they are in our county. So there'll be a map showing where these things are in our county for every single one of these. So wetlands really help to maintain water quality, and they protect communities from flooding. They're, they're provide critical habitat, so we think about all of our different species and things. They, they need the wetlands to function in order for them to continue to thrive. And then carbon sequestration, which means instead of carbon releasing out into the air, it's being locked in, which is a good thing. Next, please. Okay, so this is really important, and I'm, it's a bit technical, but I really want to touch on just a couple of parts of this. So the wetland buffers. Remember I mentioned earlier about the science is always changing? What I want to touch on here is what the science is now saying is, we were previously looking at wet... looking at wetland buffers that were like a minimum of 50 feet, but scientists are now understanding that in order to protect ecological function and have that no net loss of function, that things work better at a greater buffer width. So that baseline has moved from 50 to 100. So that does change development potential in some cases, so it's something really important as folks are coming in for permits to understand. And hopefully, as you come in, you'll find that our staff are knowledgeable and can explain how this might impact you. Next, please. Okay, so something else we've done, and I'll keep this really high level. What I'll say, and I think this is really funny, when I came to the county, we actually had our own stream typing system. When you're thinking about some of the developers that are out here, you know, building affordable housing and building homes and providing jobs, they go everywhere else around the region, and they have a stream typing system that's exactly the same, and they come to Pierce County and it's completely different. Well, what we're doing with one exception is we're making our stream typing system aligned with everywhere else around us, which is a win, I think, not only for staff, but also for folks who are coming in for permits. So it really simplifies things and makes it easier to understand. So we're adopting basically the state-level, a stream typing classification system. Next, please. Okay, moving along to fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. So I kind of mentioned all of our different species. We have some specific ones that we're really concerned about, both at the county. Some of the tribes are really concerned about some of these. We all care about our salmon. We're known for that here in this region. We want to keep them thriving and growing, so everything from eelgrass beds, our oaks, our prairie lands, which are disappearing at an alarming rate, making sure that our salmon can continue to do all of their ecological functions, so protecting our salmon-bearing streams, and old growth forests, which we cannot get back, right? Those trees are very, very ancient and old, so we need to protect those. Next, please. Okay, critical aquifer recharge areas. So an aquifer basically filters water through the ground, so it helps clean the water that we all rely on. So they recharge our groundwater, so clean, and like their filters essentially for our groundwater, and that's a source of the water we drink. You can see how many places in our county are karas, right? So it's really important to protect those. Next, please. Okay, frequently flooded areas. So this is really important from a life safety perspective and sort of understanding the areas that are flooding often. We want to make sure that we're not building in those areas because we want to not have people's properties damaged, and we obviously don't want there to be loss of life of any kind. So we're really trying to protect and understand where those areas are. And another thing that's really important about this is we have federal flood insurance that we, as a county, rely on and as the residents of the county rely on, and really doing our due diligence here helps us stay on the right side of that. Next, please. Okay, so geologic hazards. I know everybody's always talking about being worried about Mount Rainier and all those things, but part of, you know, when we think about the comprehensive plan and planning ahead for our future is thinking about things like geologic hazards. So what are our best management practices to keep our folks safe? So just really properly classifying those areas, updating those, and that helps us be able to plan for things that may go wrong. So everything from volcanoes to seismic landslide areas and things of those natures. Next, please. Okay, and agricultural areas. So obviously, we need food to live. We have livestock, all of our crops, and this identifies those areas throughout the county. Obviously, again, food production crops are livestock and where those are. And there's a real diversity throughout our county of different things that are happening. You can kind of see some of those keyed there. Next, please. Okay, so wrapping up, next steps. I mentioned that we would be going to county council committee. That's August 19th. If anybody wants to come, you're invited. And then again, we'll be working through the council process through deliberations, hearings, and action in the fall, or I guess early winter. I'm not sure when the last council meeting of the year is, but it'll probably be late fall. And I think with that, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Lauren. That was very interesting. It's important for folks to understand all the many different hundreds of, I think, thousands of pieces that go into this plan. Did any of the members have a question? Councilmember Dinsen.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a question, just a couple of comments. Thank you, Assistant Director Flemester. I just wanted to say that there is a lot in here that I really was excited about and appreciated hearing, and I just wanted to highlight a few of the things in regards to our codes, making sure that they're clear and consistent and fair for everyone, whether it is, you know, a person that owns one lot, or it's a developer that comes in with an expensive permit consultant and attorney. It's like the rules should be the same for everyone, and I just really appreciate you calling that out in here. The fairness is really important to me. I loved your focus on no net loss. We've had so much development in our county because we have a beautiful county, and we definitely, you know, need housing and all of that. We have to balance all of that, but if we don't protect our environment, you know, we're going to lose what makes us so special here, and it also really impacts us and our health and our quality of life as well as humans. So thinking about flora and fauna and just our quality of life. So I really appreciated that and taking a look at the wetland buffers. And in particular, that was really interesting to me. So I look forward to you coming before the Community Development Environment Committee, and just wanted to thank you and your staff for all your hard work on this.
Thank you. You'll be seeing a lot of me.
I bet.
Thank you for your comments. And August 19 at 1:30 in chambers, it's my birthday.
Ooh.
So I'll come.
How exciting.
I'll remember the meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So that, that ends the information that I had for, for everyone to listen to, which brings up next, the community forum. But before I open that, I do want to recognize Director Tietzen. She is the Director for Planning and Public Works, and she, you know, she's brilliant. She has a lot of, a lot of things she has to put together, so they can put the face with the, with the job position. So thank you so much for what you do. Next is, as I was going, the community forum. This is where anyone from the community has the opportunity to discuss things about county government that was not on the agenda, and you have up to three minutes. And I, is there anything I forgot to mention? I think that covered it. So I have this sign-in sheet, and I'm looking for a yes, and I have Christina.
Loves nature.
Loves nature, yes.
That's a love S nature for the pseudonym. This is for a couple not nice people. You have like 99% nice people, then like you might make 1% mad, so that's why I don't use my last name.
Okay.
Google, you put my last name, address pops up first thing.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, it's because of taxes and stuff. Yeah, hi, my name's Love S Nature, Loves Nature. I've lived in District 3 since 1996. I moved here when I was 12 years old from San Diego, California. My mom and dad met in the Navy, and they came up here because of Bremerton and Everett with Abraham Lincoln. My mom did 20 years, and my dad did almost 20, like 13 or 14 honorable discharges. Is there any veterans here? Any veterans, stand up? Am I allowed to stand up and clap, clap here?
You've done it.
Okay. Veterans, stand up, please, or clap. We can. During the pandemic, I didn't teach English, and I was a cashier for two years at a convenience store right down the road from here, and it's safe for a year and a half to get the medical dental vision benefits. And a lot of veterans in this area, and I thank you for your service. No matter if it's a day or 20 years, I thank you for your service, all branches. I'm a bundle of love. I send love to everybody, Democrat, Republican, gay, straight, black, white, brown, I don't care, I love everybody. All right, let's see here. I do have two personal issues. One's tiny, and I've talked to someone here about it before, and it's just a gap with the system. So where I live in Frederickson, copper wire theft has gone really high on my street, and they've hit my street and the streets near my area a lot. And when they steal, there's a gap between the system with Pierce County and third-party, because sometimes it has to be a third-party, and there's different companies, and sometimes they're slow about it because they're not making profit, and they prioritize their profit, and they cut budgets and stuff. So I've noticed the power lines staying longer, and I made some phone calls, and I call Public Pierce County Works, and they have to wait on the third-party, and they're kind of slow about it. And one's a cord. A semi truck hit the cords on my street, and the cord's been there like two or three years, and I have multiple tickets. I have screenshots. I called Comcast, they won't come out. I did tickets every year, and Pierce County's not allowed to cut it because of Comcast, fiber optics, private company. And it might not be Comcast, but when there's a telecommunications in Pierce County, you're not allowed to cut the wires. And so I've had a wire hanging down from the power pole like three years, and I'm not allowed to cut it, and I don't know who can cut it, county or third-party, I'm not sure. I've made a bunch of phone calls. And then the people next to me have been moved out, and this construction company has millions of dollars from King County, Pierce County, and they have semi trucks, and I love semi truck drivers and construction workers pay taxes, I love you guys, but they wake me up at 4:30, 5:30 in the morning because they have about six or seven semi trucks right outside my door, it's my neighbor. So they have single-house dwelling, but they run construction companies, and they're doing work for Pierce County, King County. It's called RL Alia. And so RL Alia has a staging company right next to my house, right next door, for Pierce County projects and for...
Christina.
Oh, sorry.
Just interested if you could wrap up.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you.
So they start at 4:30 in the morning, and so I'd like to know the ordinances for Pierce County of sleep, because they do 24/7, seven days a week staging area, and it wakes me up at 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, 4:00 AM.
We'll get to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loves Nature.
Thank you. Everybody, I love everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else who has signed up with a yes, but if you'd like to speak, if you would, go ahead and, and make your way to the podium?
I just, I signed on that.
Well, I didn't see it yet. I only saw one, oop.
Right, Tom. Thank you. It's, thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I have a couple of things on my agenda. One is that prior to COVID, I was a substitute teacher in the Bethel School District, and I subbed here. And this is an amazing program and just deserves all the support we can give it. The second part, after COVID, I didn't want to teach anymore, so I ended up the Assistant Supervisor for the PAGE program in the Senate, and we almost had no Pierce County students in the PAGE program. And I would like to encourage the county to support the school districts, to get kids into that program. It's important for them and very helpful. I go back to Cal Goings, when Cal was, and I were working together, and he was a big supporter of the PAGE program. And it's, it's critical, it really is, to this, to the legislature to have those young people there and to their education. So I'd appreciate some support from the county to the PAGE program. The second issue is I am a member of two things at this point. Kids Mental Health of Pierce County through the Health Department, and also I'm on a subcommittee for student mental health and suicide prevention with OSPI. And again, one of the things that's happened is we're throwing lots of money into mental health programs, but we're throwing it into, in the schools, we're throwing it into treatment. And I got grandkids. We've got a bigger problem in the elementary levels, and we need to recognize that. And so I've been working with kids of mental health and with OSPI to try to redirect a little bit of this towards the elementary schools. It's really bad out there. And finally, if you all came down Canyon, you know that we have an average of one wreck a week between a semi and another car, and we are, our infrastructure here is just overwhelmed. And they're building more warehouses, they've extended Canyon, I don't know why, because there's nothing at the end of it, but here from this part, from 512 on up to 200th is just slammed. And a big piece of that is they're building more facilities right along Canyon, and they have no turnoff. So a truck will pull up and stop, taking up a lane on Canyon to turn into a driveway. And we've got to get that kind of thing under control. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Would you mind giving us your name for the record? Sir, would you mind giving us your name for the record?
I'm sorry. It's Byron Smith.
Byron Smith. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have some, anyone else? Please come up.
Hello, my name is Paul Thacker. I live at 224th and 82nd Avenue East. I've lived there since 1989. I worked at Saint Joe's for 35 years. And I want to take off on what he was saying. One of the things that, with all that, all those distribution centers, the trucks are just coming down Canyon, and it's also turning into a freeway in addition to just the traffic. But let me ask this question, it's probably a dead issue. Is the, is the cross-based freeway thing a dead issue?
Yeah.
Because even if we could just get the trucks to go that way and unload Canyon for just cars, that would be nice. And if we can't do any of that, if we can get some periodic police presence on Canyon just to, I mean, I, I go 45, and they are passing me like I'm standing still. The trucks are pretty good about staying to the right and leaving the left lane open for me anyway, the time I go, but I tee off on what he said. Canyon Road, with all that development out there and the trucks, it's just, it's getting dangerous, and anything, anybody can come up with to brainstorm how to get the trucks over to the freeways faster and off Canyon, if that can happen, that would be a real help. So anyway, even if they had a toll, anybody recommend a toll across? I'm serious.
I don't have any ideas here.
Okay. Well, thank you. My name's on there, Paul Thacker.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else?
Highway 7. I don't know. Dean. Yes, my name is Dean Abshire. I've been living here for quite a while. I live in the Frederickson area, and I've got three real quick things. One is I, first of all, most importantly, I'd like to thank the council for having these in-district meetings. Please continue, and if nothing else, double them or even more. I think it's a great opportunity for people to get here that work or that can't usually attend, and it gives you a chance to see us here, which is great. Second of all, I would, everyone complains about, almost everybody complains about what the council spends money on and wastes it here and there. I can't say that I have ever heard even one person say that any of the money spent for the skill center here was wasted. This is probably the best investment that the county has made for students, for people, for everything. So my hat's off for that, and if funding comes available, I would think everyone in this community would be supported. Again, not heard a single person say bad decision. Everybody has been positive about the money used, invested in this. Last thing I'd like to talk about is, I know you are handcuffed considerably with the growth management, and I know development is working on a lot of stuff, but one of the things that's really impacted a lot of the community here is we have plans, and a lot of developers and buildings and everyone depends upon plans, and the way the growth management is, if it's planned, then they can build. It should be changed from planned to funded. If it isn't funded, it doesn't exist. Cross-based highway, a lot of people were depending upon that when they, you know, developed out here, the Canyon extension, a lot of stuff. And I know we've really addressed, and I know the council's working very hard on addressing public transportation. It is a problem, no question. Public transportation is never going to move goods and services. That's, as the other gentleman is pointing out, trucks are not going to take public transportation. Also, public transportation, especially, it's becoming even more critical as we have UPS, Amazon, right across the street down here, and more and more people are ordering stuff online, so they don't have to take transportation, good or bad, but those trucks still have to go somewhere. Roads, sidewalks, bicycles are not going to help. Trucks and trucks and developmental vans are something that really needs to be, I think, needs to be a larger address. And I am very happy to talk, I could talk for hours, but some of the stuff on the critical lands in development, I'm glad they're looking at that because it's a big, I've seen developments being, being on areas that are wetlands, but they're not identified. People try to bring those up. Just recently, there was a meeting that brought it up, and it goes, oh, not a big deal, and we'll just, we'll just not, we'll just kind of look through it because we don't have it identified. Things like that are really, really critical, and people can't always address those issues. Some people, one of the council things, someone sent in... those issues. Some people, one of the council things, someone sent in hundreds of pictures. They weren't, no one could see them because there was no good system for, for anyone to get those. I think those are some of the things that the council could look at is how individuals could better supply information to planning and land services and to people making decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. Right on time. Is there anyone else who, Stacy?
Hi, everybody. I actually did not know that Scott Martin was going to speak tonight or mention of our prestigious award as Partner of the Year. But I am very thankful to him and I am a member of the Scott Martin Fan Club as well as the Pierce County Skill Center. I think a lot of times, people in nonprofit work talk about sustainability in terms of the financial sustainability of our organizations. And I am completely preoccupied 100% of my day in funding our initiatives. And about four years ago, we became introduced to the Culinary Arts Department at the Pierce County Skill Center. And I started to think about sustainability quite differently, more about making key investments in the future. Sustainability for my model, as innovative as it is, it could disappear on a, on a dime unless I made strategic investments. And so through you, you have been able to scale the community, scale this programming and scale the sustainability of things we should hold most dear, honestly, the securing of basic needs. So it's great to talk about these things and say bravo to the students. But today I had the opportunity, the work that we have done with the Skill Center has landed me on a state advisory board for food waste reduction. I'm part of a group of 20 people that gather and we were talking about the students. Somebody called me out to say something. I don't go on things trying to be braggy, brag or so about it, although I am tremendously proud of them. But it was the mic drop of a state meeting about food waste reduction, this program. So I'm tremendously proud of them for the work they do day in and day out. And I, I did want to just highlight some of their words when they came to visit me. The future's in good hands. I think we talk a lot about kids doing this or that these days, you know, every generation, but they're going to be all right. After our trip to Good Roots, I realized that what we do in our kitchen really does make a big impact on people who go to the food bank. They know I don't like the word food bank, so they did it in quotes. And I realized on that trip that it really wasn't just a regular food bank, but it was better. Now, maybe they'll, maybe they'll design a food bank like that in their community, or maybe I asked them to dare to dream that we wouldn't have them. I've been to multiple food banks and they always seem to be rushed and often dim and dark. Often I feel like it's hard to be super happy after going to them. However, when I was on that field trip, everyone I saw walking out of the food bank had smiles on their faces. It's helped us to improve our culinary skills and make us students look at the bigger picture of how we can help the community with our skills and career. The market made me very happy. Growing up with a lot of food insecurities revolving around, needing help and stuff like that, it was hard and often made me resent my life. It was, it made me happy to see that people in the community now have a chance to experience something better than I had. I was a 17-year-old kid. I'm so proud of them, you guys. I'm so proud of them. Thank you for investing in them and for what they continue to do. And we're going to knock your socks off.
Thank you, Stacy. We have one more. Mike?
I can't.
Two more? Sweet.
Mike Avila from Eatonville. I've, I've seen the council before and it was disheartening to hear the comprehensive plan with extra regulation, more regulation, bigger buffers to wetlands. And there's other things you can do. So I would recommend if we're going to follow science, science hasn't changed, ideology has changed. I would encourage the entire council and anyone in this room to, to read two books and they're by Patrick Moore, who is a co-founder of Greenpeace. One is Trees Are the Answer. He's a PhD in Biology, co-founder of Greenpeace. And his other book is Confessions of a Greenpeace Dropout. And those books will share his ideology with a lot of people will agree with, but also open your eyes. I think, I've watched the regulations grow, grow, grow to where, whether it's the, uh, what do you call, it's a $12,000 a unit. I was in front of this council for a 40, 44-unit apartment complex who are trying to increase the density to lower the cost per unit. Your energy code that was enacted by the state just added about $12,000 to $15,000. The wetland on the property that we mitigated and made a larger wetland, so when we have to mitigate, we mitigate three to one. And we put small wetlands into one area where you do have extra habitat. But that added another $7,000 a unit. This council rejected the density increase, which now we're talking about going ahead and increasing after three years of, and hundreds of thousands of dollars of engineering. That added another $10,000 a unit. So when we talk about affordable housing and sustainability, if you went back to the old rule where if it's 5,000 square feet or less on the wetland, it's exempt. If you can block up wetlands or the county had a mitigation program that we could buy into and you consolidate wetlands, it makes more sense. So I would encourage you to look at those things and, and kind of go backwards instead of increasing buffers. When you look at a single-family house and you say, I want it to be the same for the single-family resident as for the big developer, sometimes that's not right. You've got $50,000 for a septic sometimes, the mitigation doesn't work. So people's property, you're stealing their property and they can't even build on a single lot or five acre track. You've made it impossible. So please think of that when you're passing these laws. And, and also think about what the Supreme Court just did with the Chevron decision, that our planners, engineers, county staff shouldn't make up rules as we go along. It should come from you, the legislative branch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary. Mary Ann.
It is my district. I'm Mary Ann Lincoln. I write thepiercepraypost.com, which basically tracks events that go on in this area. So I'm going to throw a couple of them out here. Dog Days of Spanaway on Saturday on Pacific Avenue at 166 from 11 to 3. You already heard about the Pierce County Fair coming up. This other one though, I'm also a member of Chambers-Clover Creek Watershed Council and the Clover Creek Restoration Alliance, which used to be called the Clover Creek Council. So Wyra 12, learned that one. Water Resource Inventory Area 12. Every single one of your districts touches a piece of it. Even 7, because it has north, it goes all the way to Point Defiance. That is our watershed for Clover Creek. It includes Spanaway Lake, it includes Silicon Lake, it includes Chambers-Clover Creek, includes Sequoia Chute. Anyway, we have a field trip coming up on August 21st and we are going to go to what they lovingly call LOT, that's L-O-T-T. That is a water treatment facility in Thurston County. And what that water treatment facility does is it infiltrates the water back into groundwater. Right now, a lot of District 3 going on sewers, everything gets pumped out to Chambers Bay and into Puget Sound. It's a sole-source aquifer. Our water here is our rain and our groundwater. And when we're pumping it out to Puget Sound, we're losing it. So we end up with all this growth and some net decrease in our groundwater and that's not healthy. We have a creek, Clover Creek, that has sections that have water only about three months of the year now. And it needs to change. So one of the things we decided to do was go out and see this sewage treatment facility that maybe we could have a version of it in Frederickson or South Hill that actually takes the water, treats it to the point it can go back into the groundwater system. So anybody that wants to come along and see this thing, there are new technologies that we could think of. Instead of continuing to span, expand Chambers Bay, dig up Spanaway Loop Road, starting August 12th, the traffic is going to really S U C K around here because of Spanaway Loop being closed for us to make a bigger pipe so more poo can get to Chambers Bay. I don't think we're going to enjoy it. So there are alternatives. So I've, I've got this new hat of I'm promoting this idea of maybe a different sewage treatment process in Pierce County somewhere in the future, instead of an airport. Maybe we could do this. Besides, we're going to be, we've got people here in Pierce County inventing flying cars, so it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else? Okay, Steve.
My name is Bob Valias. I live out in Roy and kind of inspired by the gentleman from Eatonville about growth management. And my family has had, has 100 acres out in Roy. They've had it in their, our family's name since 1916. And when growth, I support growth management. I'm, I'm not against it. I think it's a great thing. But to the landowner that wishes to keep their land as it was, and our land hasn't changed in the last 100 years as what it is today. But when you talk about buffers, especially wetland buffers, our land 20 years ago, according to the county, was, was all usable land. About half of it now is wetlands and it's identified as wetland by the county. When buffers are added, it takes away more of that. Whether I sell or whether I keep over time, those decisions that are made are affect the footprint of my usable land, which we have paid taxes on diligently for the last 100 years. And it's just something to think about. I don't know how that looks. I don't know if it's compensation or what it does. But when that buffer is added to our land, now our 100 acres, which is now 50 usable, may someday be 20 usable. But we're still paying the full rate on the eight acres that we currently have. Just something to consider. There is a loss to people that even want to retain it over time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that. Clay?
And good evening. My name is Clayton Cheng. Most of you all know my wife Carrie, who was with the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. I'm, we got stationed here in 1985 when I was a young captain flying Blackhawks out here at Fort Lewis and we've been here ever since. I want to address the community members more than the board because you all got those PowerPoints from Tom Siegel, my friend, the former superintendent Bethel School District. The Bethel School District has 13% of the population of Pierce County.
Clayton, you got it. Look at me.
We get less than 3% of the resources.
Clayton.
We have no hospitals. We have one library in Graham.
Clayton.
We have no police stations. All the sub-units are all outside. You know, we have no YMCA, we have no boys' clubs, girls' clubs. We don't have any of that. We don't have, the only parks we have are Sprinker, Frontier in Graham, and Cross Park. But in the center of where we are in Bethel, there's nothing for the kids to do. So in 2019, Tom and I broke away from the Parkland Spanaway Rotary Club and we started the Rotary Club of Graham, Frederickson, Eatonville, trying to do good in the rural communities. Now, we got chartered in October, I'm sorry, we got chartered in October of 2019. So what happened in February of 2020? We got shut down. I mean, we, we went from 30 members to down to like seven. So COVID hit us hard. So what I'm saying to all the audience here is if you are interested in helping your rural communities that you live in, in Graham, Frederickson, or Eatonville, come and join us in the Rotary Club. We're trying to do good. So tomorrow, we're going to have a meeting in Eatonville at Bruno's at 8 o'clock. And our Rotary Club, as small as we, it is, we are going to be giving a check of $500 to the Eatonville Family Agency for their food bank. So if you want to be an active member trying to do something good in the community, I invite you to join our Rotary Club. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton.
Do we have anyone else wishing to give comment? Please come up.
So John Limble, Pierce County Fair Market Sale Manager. Like to thank you for your proclamation on the, on the week of the Pierce County Fair. The other thing that's not quite recognized, that should be recognized, is there's also Pierce County Fair Foundation. And in turn, we also established a market sale at this fair. And one of the things that doesn't seem to get much recognition is the market sale. This market sale teaches the kids, 4-H, FFA, open class, basically teaches them how to budget money, it teaches them how to raise animals, animal husbandry, and it also teaches them how to sell their animals. So one of the things that's important, along with your proclamation, is if you have any spare time Saturday, August 10th at 6:00 PM, come out and support the kids and buy one of their animals. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, John. Anyone else here wishing to give comment? This is an opportunity. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Are there any members here wishing to give comment? Oh, I'm sorry, I, the Zoom.
Yes, for any members of the public who wish to provide, excuse me.
Soundtrack.
Yes, for any members of the public who wish to provide comment, press the right-hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. It looks like we have one hand at this time. Lynn B., please state your name to the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Lynn Borchardine and I am with Spanaway Concerns Citizens. Listening to the presentation on the comprehensive plan was a little difficult when I'm hearing about habitat conservation areas, you know, concern for the white oak forest, wetland buffers. I'm listening to all of this, knowing that this council is responsible for proposing a tiny home village, now called the Good Neighbor Village, the name keeps changing, on pristine wetlands that, where the, you know, that is a white oak, white oak forest that contains white oaks. So we, you know, we listened to this presentation, but the bottom line is, the council talks the talk, they don't walk the walk. Because this proposed village, which we are still fighting, it's not a done deal, that it's irresponsible for allowing it to be proposed on pristine wetlands, the watershed that feeds into Quabby Creek, Spanaway Lake, all the way down to Chambers Bay. So that, that should, that should not be happening. And I can't, I can't take this all serious when you guys don't walk the walk. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Borchardine. Appreciate your comments.
And at this time, we have no other answer.
Thank you. With no other hands, I will bring that back to the council now. Are there any further comments from the members? Wow, we're quiet tonight. We are adjourned.